Pause here, we're gonna start with a prayer followed by the pledge. Father God, we turn to you this morning and we have many things on our plate today and we pray for wisdom and direction as we make those decisions for our constituents in our county. We pray for protection, those that keep us safe, those that badge and uniform and be with them and watch over them. We're mindful of our country and the freedoms we have and we pray for direction in those in federal government that they can seek wisdom from you and see the area of the way. So, that is our prayer where it's at and we ask it only in the prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Thanks everyone for coming. First item of business, we have a public hearing and Roy just briefly explain it and then I'll take comments if there's regarding the building corporation.
Okay, we have remotely bond counsel. Brad, do you want to preface anything for this hearing, the purpose of the hearing?
Yes, will you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, good morning again. Brad being here, I'm Lawrence Dorberg. The purpose of this public hearing is in regards to the county highway garage project. This is simply the next step in the legal proceedings that's necessary in order to ultimately get to the point where you can issue bonds to finance the project. Under Indiana law, before you can enter into a lease for financing of this type of project, you have to give up the public hearing at which you take input or questions to the public regarding whether the lease rental payments are fair and reasonable and whether the lease is wise and necessary. So those are sort of the two purposes for holding this meeting. Again, just to refresh everyone's recollection, this leasing agreement will have a maximum term of 20 years. The maximum lease rental payment would be $1,503,000. Now that lease rental actually will get adjusted downward once you actually issue the bonds for the project. The lease rentals would be payable from an add-on loan property tax. And the purpose of the lease financing is to construct a new highway garage along with the related improvements that would be necessary. At this time, as far as all the necessary approvals, we've used a maximum bond amount not to exceed $15 million. However, I know there's been discussion about using other sources of money with which to finance the cost of the project. And of course, the project itself is subject to public bidding laws and so the actual cost will likely come in something lower than that based upon the actual project and scope that you decided upon. So with that, happy to take any questions. And again, I would suggest that you open the floor to the public as well to offer their comments on the lease and the project.
Thanks Brad. Floor is open. Comments, questions, anything while we have Brad on the screen.
Can you explain the lease in regard to who is the lease or lesee, obviously you don't want to, but how does all that work?
Were you able to hear that Brad?
I think I heard the question was to explain the lessor and the lesssee and sort of who the parties involved.
Yes.
So happy to jump in there. So the lessor would be the Wells County Indiana Building Corporation. And that's a nonprofit Indiana corporation that was created several weeks ago essentially by the county. And the sole purpose of that corporation is to assist the county from time to time to finance large capital improvements such as the county highway garage. Under that lease, they would be the lessor and then the county, Wells County Indiana would be the lesssee. And the whole reason why we had a lease financing in the first place is it relates to constitutional and statutory limitations on direct indebtedness. And so courts have long held that the lease financing is not debt. And the reason for that is the lease is subject to abatement. So that if, you know, the garage project premises, if part of that were to be destroyed, the county's obligation to pay rent is abated. You're not on the hook to pay that lease rental. In other words, you only make lease rental payments so long as the premises are available for use in occupancy. And so that's a mechanism that virtually every political subdivision in the state uses in order to pay for these large ticket items like a county highway garage or new school building or new county courthouse. It's really the only way you can do that because most entities, their debt limit simply isn't large enough to allow for that.
So is this a triple net lease from the county to the county basically or from the lease or to the lesee?
Yes, exactly. So the county is really the real party of interest. You know, you're on the book for covering, you know, the, you know, operating expenses, utilities, et cetera. There's no property taxes due because, you know, you're a governmental entity. But it's, you know, the operation of the premises, the maintenance, that's all of the county. The building corporation, the lessor, they're really just, again, a holding corporation. And so they're the issuer of the debt, construct the project and then they lease it back to the county itself.
You'll find historically with other project schools in the county and actually the original jail was owned by, and I discovered just a couple of years ago, we were looking for sites for the new jail, that on GIS it showed the jail was owned by the Wells County Jail Building Corporation. Like that bond was paid off years ago. So I had to contact the people, the attorneys in Indianapolis who were on that bond issue and get a deed from that building corporation to the county. So the county now owns the jail.
Is the corporation dissolved once the, once the lease is expired?
Typically, yes, it's a one.
Except in that case?
It's a single, yeah. Well, it was. The original jail, that corporation was administratively dissolved. So if you don't voluntarily dissolve, but you don't file your business entity reports, your charter will be administratively, you know, your corporation will be administratively dissolved. However, Indiana law says even if your corporation's been administratively dissolved, you still have, you still retain rights to wind up affairs. So even though the building corporation for the jail had been administratively dissolved 20 years ago, I was still able to locate the officers and get them to sign a deed as part of the wind up of the affairs.
So basically, this is a 20-year lease with the nominal buyout at the end of the 20 years. There's no, there's no big payout at the end of the lease to buy it back?
That's correct. That is exactly right. So the way the lease is set up is that there's lease rental payments for a 20-year span. And after that period of time, all the bonds would be gone. They would mature and have been paid off. And at that point, once, you know, and at any point during the lease, the county can always exercise a right to buy, to buy the property. You just have to pay off the bonds that are associated with it. But at the end of the lease term, bonds are gone. And the way the lease is set up is it says the building corporation shall transfer the asset back to the county and execute any sort of instruments, you know, necessary to do that. And as Roy points out, what's very common is, you know, 20 years goes by, people come and go, kind of forget what's happened. It's very common that the building corporation gets administratively dissolved. And we oftentimes do find that the, you know, the titles of the property is still in the name of the building corporation. But by the operation of the lease itself, there's actually another statute that comes into play, they are required to transfer that back to the, to the county proper as well. And we've had to deal with it before. We have, you know, building corporation members that have moved away or they've passed away. And there's different ways we can go about doing that to get title cleaned up and transferred back into the county's name.
Thanks Brad. Any other questions?
Are all the building corporation members all elected officials or who, what's the makeup of it?
None of them are elected. Luann Garten, Michelle Soderbich and Steve Higgins.
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 Sorry. Any other questions? Close the hearing. Close the hearing. Thank you. Appreciate it. Other line of business, we're gonna open the regular session. The first item of business were the minutes from our previous meeting. Any alterations, corrections from the minutes you received? No taking the motion.
So moved.
Second, all favor eye. Three zero. Next item is the financials. We had two payrolls for calendar year 2021. Payroll 19 totals $240,195.42. Payroll number 20 totals $241,354.59. Two claims during this timeframe. The first one, $636,691.28 and $235,494.98. Entertaining motion for the financials.
So moved.
Second, second, all in favor eye? Three zero. Very good. All right. We'll move to you. Go ahead Scott. Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
First off, Jeff, thanks. Congratulations. Welcome to the commissioners. Like, I think you're starting to be the odd guy out with all the hair, so.
It's leaving in a hurry.
Is it? Okay. All right. Looking forward to working with you, Jeff, as far as commissioners and how that deals with the jail. Give you a quick update on inmates as of this morning. There were 69 inmates in jail. 26 of those are pre-trial superior, 21 are pre-trial circuit, 13 F6 and five DOC. The only other thing I have right now is just kind of give you a preliminary update. We had a pre-construction meeting last Wednesday with Amoresco and Jackson Construction to kind of lay out a timeline of when they were gonna start with things and kind of give us an update. A lot of it's been driven off materials and parts, when they can get stuff in and when they can't. But it sounds like they're going to start setting up towards the end of this month. At least the contractors for Jackson Construction's gonna start showing up on site with some of their stuff here yet this month. But the goal is the first week of November, they will be kicking off construction as far as our intake area and getting things prepped so we can move into a temporary intake while they're, while they're doing that. So they're going to also be starting on lighting and water conservation stuff and the HVAC stuff probably here yet this year. So the whole goal, at least time-wise, is to have the completed construction by August of next year. So a little under a year for the whole thing. Several things like the roof, the materials for the roof, they can't even get them right now. So that's probably springtime next year, the parking lot. Stuff on the public side will be more towards spring or summer next year. So, but yeah, we've been having a lot of the contractors for various projects coming out and doing final detail stuff and meeting with them. But we're probably gonna be on a week meeting basis with the, with the construction manager and keeping things going. So a lot of coordination has to happen, obviously, to have all that stuff done while we're continuing to operate business as usual.
Also let me know some of the documents that come through to me. If I don't reply, sometimes they go to my junk.
Okay.
And they need my signature. And I normally try to forward things just to get the permits and make sure.
Sure.
Just text me.
Yeah, as far as I.
In case something, I think we had one time I didn't get something and it took an extra two or three days.
Yeah, sounds like everything is in order for, as far as what they need, so.
Who's the CM on that one?
Amoresco is the, is the contract manager. So Jackson will report to them. It's Tom Rowan, if you want his name. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Jeff, I extended an invite to you, get you up to speed on the jail project in a little more detail whenever you got time. Reach out to me and we'll give you a tour out there and walk you through what we're, what's going on there. So, good day. Any questions?
Nope. Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you Scott.
Yep.
You want to address the salary contract?
The commissioners and council approved the salary contract for the coming year for the sheriff. And I had emailed that to you all ahead of time. I think you had a conversation with him.
Yep.
About it. So it's gonna be a miscellaneous document, 2021-11.
You've got new names?
I just have member.
I've got.
You have new names?
Yep, I do.
Okay. We'll use his then.
Entertaining motion for his contract for 20, 22 sheriff's contract. Second. Second, all in favor eye?
Aye.
You need to speak up like me.
Yeah.
Three zero. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Since, appreciate Roy, Kevin has stepped down, Jeff has stepped in, and I'm making a motion that Mike moves into Kevin's spot through the end of the year as VP. Do you support that?
I do.
So moved. All in favor eye?
Right.
Three zero. Fantastic. Okay. We'll move to Sean.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome Jeff, congratulations. Thank you. We are out doing our final round of mowing, trying to get these weeds taken care of. Here last week and a couple of weeks in the future, we've had several pipe crossings going on and road closures. I've been trying to put it out on media, Facebook, newspaper, contacting emergency personnel especially to make sure that they know these roads are closed. Longest one we had was three days. So having everybody keep an eye on that so they're aware of any road closures. I got the hand patching crew, they finished up with the north or with the south and now they're moving to the north to get the roads in shape for the winter. We're gonna start doing pipe crossings down south next week or this week and through next week. Road striping was delayed a little bit. I don't like not seeing striping on the new chip seal roads out there where necessary, but I finally got a contractor to take care of it. Should be starting next week. I also forgot to put on the paper here that's in front of you. I came to request another 30-day extension for Howard Benefil because he had the amputation. And I was hoping that we could get that for another 30 days. He is still on our sick bank program. He just ran out of the FMLA when it originally started. So.
I would recommend that. I'll indicate a motion for that. So moved. All in favor eye?
Aye.
Three zero. Okay. Any questions? Nope, just keep us posted.
All right.
Thanks sir.
Doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thanks. Oh, Nate. Looked right around you.
As if you have nothing to present today. Bring the catalog out.
I congratulate Jeff, but I'll just say I'm sorry. So no, there's a lot going on here, at least since our last meeting. Certainly welcome, Jeff. I appreciate your time and effort. We'll start with our NDOT notice of funding availability, 2027. Right now, the plan has been, and I've reported before, that we're looking at going after the remainder of the County Road 200 South improvements as a federal aid project. That's in concert with the City of Bluffton and the Cities Redevelopment Commission, so that's underway. I've got some meetings to go through some of the cost estimates for that, so I'll have that ready hopefully here, either the next meeting or the first meeting in November. But NDOT, as I asked, if Wells County is looking at any bridge projects, and they specifically identified two bridges that they would entertain applications on, and that'd be Bridge 72 and 76. I've given you copies of actually the NDIS, or Natural Bridge Inspections and Structure Inventory Reports, for your review. Bridge 72 is a 24-foot span bridge, has a higher traffic count, but it is at a very odd skew. Bridge 76 is a 37-foot span bridge with just a fraction of the traffic on it. Neither bridge really is ideal based on their size. Probably the Bridge 72 over 300 on 300 West would be probably a better option if you were looking for federal aid projects. I'm more than happy to consider these. I don't want to make it my decision to say not to, but unfortunately, the Kuhn Bridge Fund is already funding a number of bridge projects already through federal aid. 54, 105, 51, and now Bridge 71, which I'll come to here in a little bit. So adding a fifth bridge under that fledgling account, it probably can't support that. So if we go for the funding and you are awarded, you'd probably be in a situation where you would need to increase the Kuhn Bridge allocation. If you go for federal aid for this, it is fiscal year 2027 construction. There really would be no cost to the county directly until 2023, because we wouldn't know the award until '22. You'll do consultant selection. So there would be time to make accommodations to set the local match aside. A condition of the application is a funding commitment by the commissioners. So I want to kind of leave it up to you. I'll put the application together if you see fit. Unfortunately, it will take some time, so.
If we don't do it now, when will be the window? April next year? For 2020 fall?
Well, you'll usually find out, like, we found out in September that there was going to be a call in November, so usually you've got about a two-month window. So your next funding window would likely be 2028. These projects could be community crossings projects, but we already have a list of three four bridges that are already at some different stage in development. So these are both scour bridges, so they're, hydraulically, they're really too small, so when I say these are the spans, they could necessarily increase because of hydraulic review, and I actually have a copy of the hydraulics. Actually, the Bridge 72 probably needs to significantly increase, 76 miles or so. So they're not big bridges, but they're something to consider, and I don't want to, I wanted to at least make it, it needs to be your choice as far as if you want to move forward with it, so.
What's the max move or min, minimum move that Kuhn Bridge Fund could change? Can we make it any amount, or does it have to be like whatever? Maybe we don't have that info right now.
I don't know that off the top of my head.
There's some funds that you have to move a certain percentage.
Yeah, .0333, but I'm not sure about.
And I don't remember, I know, I know we're not capped on the Kuhn Bridge, but I don't know what fraction of that we are. I suspect we were 20 or 30% of what we could be, if I recall, but that's.
But I don't know if we can just move it, you know, five points or?
I'm sure we can.
But when will it take effect? Not until next year for funds coming in '23, correct?
Correct.
So.
And when's the deadline to put that into effect?
October, I believe.
Of this year?
One, yes.
So this will be.
We'd have to decide at the next meeting for sure.
And the decision, you'd have to decide that you want to move forward the applications, and then you have next year as far as how you're going to find out, finalize your funding. I just don't want to turn down a grant if that's something that you're prepared to do, but I can't just say, go for it, because I know Kuhn Bridge won't support it. In this market, there's too much risk for me to be comfortable in doing that.
Is it often that NDOT contacts you, asking you if you've got projects?
No, it's not normal. They've done it once before, and when they did it, we went after three projects and we got them all. So that's why I felt it's, I mean, you're talking about maybe as much as a two-plus million dollar federal aid award specific to bridges, so.
I like 72 better than 76.
Yeah.
If I had to pick. But it's still, I don't want to put ourselves in a position that.
It's a blessed situation to have so many different grants, and I've got more to talk about as well, but just if we go after these projects and you're fortunate enough to be awarded, we do have to come up with a local match. So I wanted to at least make you aware of that, and then you can look what options you have.
What is the match on a 50/20?
It's a 20%, so we're coming up for $1 out of every five. So we, it's, it's nothing to sneeze at when you're talking about a big project. Thankfully, it is spread out over a five-year period with the, obviously, the biggest part when you get to the construction, so.
Let's bring this back, if that's okay.
Oh, absolutely. I don't need you to make a decision. I just, I want you to be aware of it. This is the information. I would encourage you to let me know at the October meeting if we want to do the application, because there's quite a bit that's got to be done, and with Thanksgiving and such, there's just time off in November that'll cause me some trouble.
I mean, bottom line is, we're going to be repairing these bridges at some point.
Yeah, at some point you're doing it. Either you want to do it this way.
Right.
That's certainly, it's, it needs to be your decision how you want to proceed with that, so.
Perfect.
Okay. All right. Next item, just an update on Bridge 99. This is Hoosier Highway and Asher Road, or Curve Correction Project. The beams have been set. You see the nice little color photograph there. That project is well on its way. Certainly the paving project work that goes along with it, I wish they were already working on the road. They aren't supposed to be starting out this week. If the weather can hold out enough, they can at least tear up the asphalt and get the new alignment placed and start on that, but the bridge work itself's been going in pretty well, so I'm hoping to see that move forward. I haven't seen any major cost adds as part of that work. We've had to work around AT&amp;T's line because they were negligent in moving it.
Late to the game.
They were a little late to the game, and I'll take some credit for getting them there late to the game. They've been aggressive on their schedule, so we made it work and I don't see a real problem. We just slaved it through part of that wall behind it, so that works out all right. So just, that's moving along, and certainly you're all welcome to go see that project. I know Blake, you were there, weren't driving the pilings.
Yeah.
We couldn't have a perfect, more perfect situation for pilings. They all were within about six inches of what the Geotech Report said, so when driving pilings, we hit rock right away. So that was, that was a great feeling to get to that point. Update on Hoosier Highway, the local tracks project. NDOT is looking to delay the letting of that schedule to February of 2022. Sorry, that should be 23. Correct that. So it should be February of 2023. They were looking at October of '22. They're adding that time for right-of-way acquisition. I just, I wanted to give them additional time so that didn't delay this project any further. The key for them is obviously staying the fiscal year. It really doesn't delay construction because the work will end up falling into any time that next season in '23. So it really doesn't harm them on the construction schedule. I am going to try to get them to move that back forward again if they can get the, all the right-of-way acquired with time. So I'll keep you updated. They send me monthly updates. I'd hope to have one to send in this packet, but there's so much stuff on here today anyway, so I'll keep you updated on that project as that moves forward. County Highway Design Standards. Jerry Faust with NERC met with the Highway Department and the Sheriff's Office to discuss the local road safety plan and how we plan to use this data to develop future highway design standards. We have engineering resources on contract to develop some of those drawings, so what we're going to do is work between the Sheriff's Office, the Highway Department, and their recommendations on coming up some qualified design standards for these road projects. Those could actually lay into federal aid projects or community crossings projects. If we have documented standards, they actually can be supplemented over even federal highway or NDOT standards. So those can give us opportunities to save some construction money and actually some time as well, so it'll be a benefit for us in the long run. So I'll keep you updated on that. I'm hoping to have that in place by the end of this year is my goal.
Okay.
All right. Federal aid contracts. We have two contracts I'm recommending approval on. One is from Bridge 71 with Butler Fairman and Seifert, and then the other is for County Road 200 South, and these are all, that's for Phase 1, the west phase of 200 South, and that is with USI Consulting. And I did not write the total contract amounts on those.
Are they president-only signatures, or are they all members?
Look at the tab there. I think it is everybody.
Everybody, yep, everybody.
Yep. So, and I think we've got them either corrected or corrected copies, or the, I think the Butler Fairman one, I will have to mark out Kevin's name.
I was going to say.
Oh. Oh, okay.
This contract here has changes. I'm looking at the LPA consulting contracts.
Well, there's two, you've got, we've got three different ones, two in this for the preliminary engineering phase.
Okay.
And then the next one I'll talk about is a Bridge 106. That's for construction, engineering, inspection.
So we'll deal with this afterward, so.
Yep, that's fine. We can do the signatures afterwards, so I'm just recommending approval on those two agreements. Those are the preliminary engineering phase of the 2026 federal aid projects.
I know we went over this, but did you have the total amounts? I just say you do not.
I didn't write them down in here, but they are in that agreement. I'm sorry. I have, oh, this is the Bridge 106, I'm sorry. I didn't write it in my notes.
Should be on the first page, Blake.
That's for Bridge 71.
Bridge 71.
Yep.
And, is there another document, or is this the only one?
No, it's the other document then, so you're going to want to look for the other.
200 South is $614,425.
Okay.
$614,425.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three, zero.
Thank you. Next item here is Bridge 106. This is for the CE phase of that federal aid project. This is the County Road 100 North over the Rock Creek, they're just east of Rockford. That is for the construction inspection portion of the project. It is for a note to exceed amount, and this one I actually have in front of me, is for $175,000. This is also in, under that 80/20 agreement, so the county is only obligated for a portion of that.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
County Home Road. I had promised an update on that project. That is another one of our federal aid projects. Review of some alternatives that were brought up during the public informational meeting. So Butler Fairman and Seifert had sent me an email kind of looking at different alternatives. I don't have a long narrative here on my report, but I do have that four-page document of the different routes. So I know there's some comments, it just got shut up late, so I forwarded along as soon as I, or soon after I got the update, because before they had left soft cost increases under the current design. So what, some of the options, if you look at pages three and four, there were some, figure one is the current design, the S curve behind the Starkey property with some improvements to 2 Southwest of the intersection, a little bit of County Home Road to the south, and then just a slight section after it goes north. One of the requests of the property owner, Newt Will, I guess the current property owner of the old Max Howe properties, Courtney Pfister, was to look at taking County Home Road just due north with a slight sweeping curve to the east and then teeing into the old, what is 450 East. That was one of the options, essentially eliminating some of the west work on 2 South and even eliminating work south of the current intersection of County Home Road and 2 South. Option 1A adds back in those two extensions, so that you're looking at a very similar scope of work. And then option two was a sweeping curve to the south and east, raising it up out of the floodplain, but then necessitating the acquisition in all likelihood of the Starkey property. So those are the essentially options, 1, 1A, and 2. Option 3 is not shown, and that was simply a change in a cul-de-sac alignment. So instead of coming off of, instead of coming off of the north and sweeping down for those two residents, it'd be sweeping east-west along the north side of the Starkey property, leaving a slightly larger grass area to the north that could be maybe combined into the field to the east. So those are some of the options that they put together to, for consideration. Unfortunately, for the most part, when you look at your rounded totals, other than, let's see, part of our reason for these options, some of the options actually are somewhat cheaper, but, let's see here, contingency, right-of-way acquisition. All right, I'll just read through some of their summary. The current option includes approximately 0.15 miles of County Road 2 Southwest of County Home Road, 0.11 miles of the cul-de-sac along 450 East, and .18 miles of County Home Road south of 2 South, as well as the drainage improvements. Option 1 does not include those above extensions. Although the cost of option 1 is less than the current proposed alignment, this alignment doesn't provide a safe roadway, specifically at the T intersection where the proposed road will connect to County Road 450 East and the house located at this proposed intersection. Records show that similar intersections are very dangerous, or can be dangerous, because drivers occasionally fail to stop, and unfortunately, some fatalities have occurred. That specifically would be, there's a home at the end of that T that's as proposed, so we'd be driving traffic to a T intersection stop sign. In the event that drivers were to fail to stop or to slide through that, they would go into that yard or possibly all the way into that house, which has led to fatalities in the past. Finally, this option will require additional survey, archaeological investigations, and a new environmental document, significantly delaying the schedule and jeopardizing the federal funding. And that point is, is our project is tied to a specific fiscal year for awards, so if we are unable to meet that schedule, then it jeopardizes our availability for federal funds. So you end up having to give back certain funds to try to get other funds, and that is at the discretion of the state, and often when a project is this far along in the schedule, they don't allow that to happen because there's not an opportunity to move that money into that, that future year. That makes sense. Option 1A just expands the scope to kind of fit the same limits, but it doesn't change the overall negative review from the engineer. Option 2, like option 1, does not include the extensions. Although the cost for option 1 is less than the current proposed alignment, this alignment would provide a safer roadway, however, this option would require the Starkey relocation and would significant, and also include all of the same delay considerations. So you go from acquiring farm ground to acquiring a house and essentially forcing, you would have to relocate Starkeys. So you'd be acquiring a homestead and then demolishing the houses to accomplish the project, which was, during the planning phase, was discouraged. That was a recommendation to stay away from doing that. Option 3 is just a cul-de-sac option, which because of the delay in the cost or the schedule and the additional soft cost is really, is a non-starter for us.
Right.
So that's options. I want to at least present that to you, if you'd like more of an explanation from the consultant.
I'm getting this late. I think I'd like to sit down and get a 24 by 36 and.
I can get some larger graphics to kind of show you what that is. As of right now, the project's moving forward according to its current schedule. If we want to make any of these sorts of adjustments, certainly I'd need to know sooner rather than later, and we need to get NDOT involved immediately if that's the direction we want to go.
Yeah, so we can get this, and to meet with Nate at your convenience and, please, give you an answer at our next.
Certainly.
October meeting here.
Yep. All right. I know it's quite a bit here on the schedule. The Murray, previously this summer, we went after a stormwater transportation, stormwater grant through the Indiana Finance Authority. That's some of the money that the state set aside for, from their ARP dollars. So when they got the American Rescue Plan funds, they, the state was looking to allocate certain funds. They used the Indiana Finance Authority to put that grants out. The state gave us really no direction as far as what match was necessary as far as The state gave us really no direction as far as what match was necessary as far as the local dollars. And so we put together a project to pursue funding for new storm sewers following the Regional Sewer District project in Murray. Wells County was awarded funds for that. This work is anticipated for 2022. I presented, I actually have an agreement from Choice One to do the design engineering for that project for your consideration. Once I have more information about the grant award and terms, which actually, since I do have that, I've got their contract, actually is available for your review. I hope to start designing ASAP so we're ready to bid this winter. The design contract totals for $78,500 for that project. Since Choice One's already done the survey work and geotech work, we're actually able to start really immediately on that, getting that design done. So I'm using the, the design from the Regional Sewer District as a benefit for us to move forward with on projects like this. Because a stormwater job in Murray or some of these small towns without separated sewers really just isn't feasible because we're not allowed to build new combined sewers in areas where it's not collected. So it really does hold us back from doing some of the improvements the public has been asking or desperately requesting from us. So this will address some of the crawl space flooding and road, road and street flooding in these areas while doing projects like this. So this was a bit of a long shot grant application since we didn't know the terms and even SRF didn't know what they were going to award based, until they got all the applications in. So the proposal from SRF is a grant award of $855,563 with a minimum local match of Now, we are still basing our cost estimates on very, very early draft cost estimates. We haven't finalized the design. Typically, I'll have a finished design before we put something together like this specifically, but in this case, we didn't really have the time to do that. And there, we didn't set aside the money to do this. It was a kind of a two-month notice, if I recall, that they gave us a window to put something in. Unfortunately, the award was reduced from what we initially requested from SRF. We'd asked for over a million dollars. The estimated, the shortfall, based on our early estimates, is about $285,187. Since we have not completed the design, I'll work with the engineer to try to reduce the cost of the project so we can try to cut that gap, bring that in a little bit.
Can I interrupt you a second?
Oh, sure.
Is this drainage strictly from 116 on the south and the west side? Does it have any drainage on the east?
It's, we'll pick up that low area in that field to the east.
At the northeast intersection?
Yep, that standing water that sets over there, yep. It will address the crossing under 116.
Okay.
So that's our, that is one of our key points.
Well, that's one of my key, that's included in this.
And one of the, one of the, one of the conditions for the grant was that this is projects that benefit the state infrastructure as well.
Right.
So they wanted projects along state roads. So that's why 116 was picked for this. If they continue it, then we'd look for other towns, small towns along the state routes, or we'll find other avenues to try to do improvements.
Gotcha.
So it's unfortunate, they, they shorted us in what we requested, but since we had really no guidelines, it was, it was a complete shot in the dark as far as what our award would be. So there's.
Educate me real quick, Nate. Well, we have some of these areas already torn up, some preliminary earthwork done that would benefit the stormwater alongside with, with sewer, or no?
It, it could. Unfortunately, the grant funding, it can't be necessarily tied together. We could try to do some projects internally, like for example, in Liberty Center, there's a few hundred feet of storm sewer that's being replaced as part of the sanitary sewer project because of a conflict.
Sure.
And so that was done in concert with the surveyor's office. So Jared and I reviewed the Liberty Center Sewer District project to find opportunities to make some improvements. And certainly by doing a lot of the preliminary field work, we're able to identify private tiles, connections. But until the sanitary sewage is, is out of some of these lines, it really does tie our hands from doing the, the sort of work that I think the public wants to see done. And unfortunately, they don't, they haven't been kind of informed on what our limitations are. So it's certainly our goal to try to tackle those. It's just, it's got to be a certain process. And thankfully, I think, having worked with Indiana Finance Authority on the Murray sewer project, gave us a significant leg up in getting this award. So how we want to finance the remainder and that shortfall, I guess, my goal was to pull 126, the, the local match out of the lit Bridge and Rogue Fund that, that I use, that income tax fund, but I don't know that we could absorb, that I could absorb the full $285,000 additional out of that. So unless the cost estimates come down, I'm going to be looking to, to find other avenues to finance the remainder. So I'll know more as we get through with design on final pipe sizing.
Does Sean in his budget for the highway have anything left over that can be encumbered or whatever you want to call it to assist toward it? Not really?
Not really. We have, we have a certain, we, we set aside about half of the local match, about, about $150,000. We've, we have set aside for, for, well, Community Crossing Management Grant.
Oh, good.
So we've got actually some road projects that we're targeting for community crossings because we've done primarily bridges or some, some curve corrections, geometry work. But we're going to try to do some road work with that. So I'm hoping to have some more information on what we're going to pursue with that. But I'd hate to tie our hands with that. If we do it, that's fine. It's, this is a very, I mean, the, the grant award is actually almost as much as we could ever get through community crossings. So it's a significant grant award for us. It just kind of, it's kind of a little bit of a cloud with a big silver lining. I didn't expect to get the money, but now we've got to make the grant work.
Right, and we got the difference between what we were anticipating and expecting to what.
Yeah, and if they had given us some guidance on that, I could have developed this and known this earlier on, that would have been helpful, but.
But looking at the grant agreement, it appeared that the state was using ARP money.
Correct, the state, this is their American Rescue Plan funds from the state.
And that's federal law, so if the state can use it.
If the state can use it, then there's.
You would think the county could.
I would think that the county could.
I forwarded this to the attorney at Barnes and Thornburg who's advising us on use of ARP funds. She said she'd get back to me, but.
Yep. In talking to the surveyor this morning during Drainage Board, he presented that there was, there were workshops at the AIC conference where specifically ARP dollars were being directed to stormwater projects, which leads me to believe that the answer that you'll get from Barnes and Thornburg is yes. So I would, I would hope that that'd be a possibility.
Do you recall from the county's ARP plan, we pretty well committed the first, the first trench.
Right.
But the second hasn't.
The, I, I have your $2 million in the .9 here. The Wells County Regional Sewer District was awarded $5 million from the State Water Infrastructure Fund. And that was in consideration for about $17 million in other co-funding, which will mostly be loan and grant dollars and the $2 million that the county committed from their ARP plan. Because there was earmarked $2 million of the 2.6.
I only counted that.
Okay, so there's still 600,000. There's still a significant chunk remaining of the 2022 deposit that hasn't been planned out that could be used for the Murray project.
Or, or utility extensions from the highway garage.
Yep, so utilities could, are all eligible for that. So, but I bring up the, the RSD project specifically just to kind of point that out. The RSD doesn't have their meeting until October 18th. We're still waiting for the final announcement of the, of the loan subsidy, which would be the forgivable loan, otherwise known as a grant. They call it their forgivable loan program for SRF. So there's, there's additional dollars that the RSD is anticipating, but they won't, they won't have their next meeting until October 18th, which is due to Columbus Day. So I'll have some more information following that meeting, what that board decides to do moving forward with that. So that's a good indication that, that that $2 million commitment was the right direction for us because we turned that into seven, so.
On this Murray one, you said it's only one homeowner we have to work with to get easement?
Correct, yes.
Which one?
Clark?
Neil Clark Estate. So it's, his son, Neil had just recently passed away, so his son is actually the executor on that property. So I'll talk to him again. He's already, I've already spoke with him about the potential of the project before I applied. He was agreeable at that time. We don't need to acquire the right-of-way. It's all actually a floodway and floodplain. So it's mostly just a nature preserve for him and his family, so.
Back piece here through the woods?
Yep, that little section through the woods. So we're going to be using public right-of-way. There's actually a very wide right-of-way on that old town for the county. So we're going to try to stay within that. One, it gives us the benefit that the county highway department can assume ownership for most of these lines unless there's a petition to create a, a legal drainage system, and then we can partner with the drainage assessments for future work. This keeps us somewhat on that sort of schedule. If we had to acquire significant parcels, then I don't think we could meet a 22 window. So. I should know more about the Regional Sewer District's final drainage amount here in the next week or so. I was hoping to have the full, full amount today, but I don't yet. And then the last thing I have today is a right-of-way dedication. I have one for a County Road conversion project, and Roy, did you have any others?
I've got a total of 14.
Hey, that's fantastic, I suppose. We'll have to see which projects we have complete right-of-ways on, because that's quite a few.
Entertain a motion for the right-of-way dedications. So moved.
Second. All paper, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
Oh, thank you very much. Sorry to take quite a bit. There's a lot going on here in the last few weeks. Appreciate your time. Any other questions for me?
I'll get with you on that, though.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thanks, Nate. Lisa, do you know what our balance would be on the ARP plates that are remaining right now after the jail?
We have 47 pledged, then we're going to get 54.
I don't see Marlene as 77. Beth is here.
This last deposit, though, I'm going to have you next. It's not been earmarked.
I mean, total, we're going to get 54.
Right.
Yeah, we got 27 already in our fund, and we'll get 27 next year.
Okay.
So, yeah, he has 27.
So we'll have some left, though?
Yes.
From this deposit?
No.
Okay, that's what I needed.
Yep.
Good morning.
Good morning. Morning. I am coming in behalf of the election board, and one of my election board members is also Roy Johnson, so we're both here. But we are presenting an order to delegate the authority to the county election board to do the precinct lines for the county. Right, by statute, that is the commissioner's duties to draw the precinct lines. And we don't change them unless, you know, of course, they would get too big or too small, and we don't have those issues in our county. But we did have three annexations in Bluffton and one in Ossien. And we like to have the precinct boundaries to match up with the cities and towns. Otherwise, we have to do split ballots, and then that just gives everybody, our poll workers and also the voters, it gets confusing and chance of errors and stuff like that, too. So we would like to make those changes this year. But a lot of the counties across the state are delegating that authority to the county election boards, just because election boards are the ones that really work with those boundaries, you know, on the precincts, and that would just give one thing off of your plate to do if you would like us to take on that responsibility. Otherwise, we would be coming to you to make those changes. So, and I think Roy sent out probably a copy of the order to, to delegate that.
And the deadline is the 23rd?
The 15th, we have to have a proposed order and the annexations, which I got all the annexations, and I'm working with Michael in our GIS department to get our lines mapped out. We're supposed to have, there was supposed to have been a new tool that was going to let the county's clerks to redo them with a redrawing pencil, but that just got canceled. We, it has been on the agenda like every month, and then they keep pushing it back, pushing it back, and then I got yesterday that they canceled. I think this is not going to work. So everything's going, just be done by paper. You know, they was hoping to have this mapping thing that we could do online, but it doesn't look like. But, but this particular thing to do the re-presincting, we had to send in a, a survey last month to be on the list to be able to do that, which I've done that. And then the paperwork all has to be presented to the state election division by the 15th, which is before your next meeting.
Right.
So that's why I'm coming to you before this meeting to see if that's something that you would like to delegate to the.
What are the three annexations? The new subdivision, the apartment complex?
For the apartments, and then the new subdivision, and then there was one now on the south side of town. Now, I don't think the thing on the, the area on the south side of town, right off Western Avenue, I don't, I think that's going to be all industrial. But if we're going to make the changes, we might as well just make that change to just incorporate that in that.
And then what's one in Ossien?
It's taken a street, it's on the east side, and it's.
Does it include crosswinds?
Crosswinds.
Does that sound right?
Crosswinds.
Okay. Oh, yeah, we got, yeah, yeah, so.
Bridges will be coming up, too.
Yeah, so that one will probably, maybe, hopefully, we'll get done, too, fairly quick, and then we'll just add that. And then that'll be another thing that we would just do rather than just bring it in for the commissioners.
So these lines have more to do with, with Ossien and the city of Botham than they do anything else?
Yes, just, just matching them up with the town.
They're gaining county property and we're losing it.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
And there's some people that wouldn't be represented directly, or there'd be people that live in certain precincts.
The district lines are going to be the district lines. So see, if we didn't change the precincts, what we would have to do for, for say, like the municipal elections next year, we would also have to add three more precincts.
Right.
With a split.
I'm tracking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, so I, I would, so moved.
Section 2nd, all paper, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
Roy, spend the paperwork. And if Lisa would like to add me to the next agenda, and hopefully I will be bringing you the precinct by population numbers, so that way we can decide whether we want to do any redistricting, you know, for the county, for the commissioners.
There's room for you to do that every 10 years, correct?
Yes.
You have to.
Yeah, you have to do it. So whether you do it or not, you're about to sign an order that you don't want to change anything or sign an order to change things.
To change it, yes.
And I talked with Michael this morning, and he said he should be able to have numbers for me by the next meeting. So I'll bring that to you and let you know what the numbers are for the council, if that's right. The commissioners don't have to have number-wise, but, you know, and, and I think we spoke about that, so you can be thinking again if there's anything you want to do with that or if you want to leave it the way it is, then we'll just, you know, do the order to leave that the way it is. But I'll bring you the numbers with this, those numbers at the next meeting, and then you can decide on what you want to do with that.
And what would be the deadline on that one?
That has to be done by the end of the year, so that way the district lines are set, you know, for any candidates that would be running.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see Marlene here, so. Chad, we'll move to you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Move it to the middle. Myself and Audrey, who is in our office, working on tourism-focused activities, are coming to you with a proposal to fund kind of a startup piece to moving some of the tourism efforts forward. We've sought a couple proposals from some area or local companies to kind of focus on a couple different pieces of work as, as a startup. Those pieces are, the first being branding, making sure that the branding is cohesive throughout the remaining elements, so that's kind of the first piece. Print material, so starting and actually producing a tourism guide that will be produced after the first of the year. Taking the branding and rebuilding a website. From a tourism perspective, most people are going to visit you online before they ever visit you in person, so we want to have a high-quality website with high-quality assets. Those assets also included in the proposal is some video work, some photography work, and then some additional work that will kind of, again, develop that brand, develop the key messaging, the coloring, those types of things for some future promotional items that would be made available as well. So I'm going to have Audrey kind of talk about the, what we've been doing and why we've kind of come up with this piece of kind of seed funding to move, to start the and why we've kind of come up with this piece of kind of seed funding to move, to start the project. And then hopefully, we can get some sustainable funding once we get these key pieces moving.
Yeah, so we've put together a steering committee for tourism, built up of those that we find are going to be key, key influencers in how it's developed. John Winnie of Obachi State Park, Britt Bowman of East Uniondale Goods, which we consider to be agritourism, when you take agriculture, which we have plenty of, and you make it a tourist attraction. We have been in discussion with Chan Patel of Comfort Inn, Scott Elsie, Kathy Gardner. She runs the Washington Street Inn, the Bed and Breakfast downtown. Brandy Fechter of the Bluffton Parks Department, Paris and Rob Fetters of Rod's Rustics Antique Store in Ossien, Heidi and Jeff Reed of Crimson House Coffee House in Ossien, Corey Mann of Wells County Trails, and Lori Baumgartner, who works with the Parks Department, but we've been using her as a transplant resident, so her influence on that. We are looking for suggestions for additional persons of interest that would give us insight on how to develop this further. But we've been taking all of their input as a committee, working on how does tourism help us as a community or as a county? How does it help you and your business? How do we make it all cohesive? How do we work together to promote the county and all its assets? I've also talked to several CBBs, Convention and Visitors bureaus in the state, and we've been looking at where we're at and where we're behind, and how we can get on top of those things to promote where we are better. So is there anything else you want me to touch on?
No. So, you know, our hope is, is to eventually have a conversation related to an innkeeper's tax for sustainable funding as well as the development of a tourism commission. Our, our expectation is through this project, the, those kind of identified for that commission would be those who work on this project. So, and with Audrey being the project leader. So when we get to that point, we don't feel that actually creating a legislative body or through the legislative process to create the tourism commission makes sense until there's long-term funding in place. So, but we want to use those individuals and then come back to you and say, here's our suggestion of, of who that tourism commission can be once, if there is an innkeeper's tax established by the council. So to begin, we, we don't want to stop the work. We want to make sure it continues. We want to make sure that we are putting those assets out there, making sure that we're a county that has an opportunity to increase and bolster its, its tourism economy, although the visitor economy. And from an economic development perspective, it's very important for us as a marketing tool for attraction of residents, retention of residents, and again, as well as supporting that economy from a, from a dollars and cents perspective. So we sought, again, two proposals. The average of those proposals is around $30,000. What we would ask is that if you would contribute that $30,000 over this year and next year, $15,000 split between the two years, and then not to exceed dollar amount. Our intention is to apply for grants that would hopefully lessen next year's commitment of those funds. But seeking that $15,000 this year, hopefully, let next year, it's less than that as we hopefully are awarded some other funds from other sources.
Did you say you already have contractors for branding, printing, and the website?
We do not. Well, they, we have quotes from two individuals that would produce those things, yeah.
Any of those local vendors?
Who has control over this committee after it's formed, or council?
So our hope would be is, once it's, once it's formed and legislatively formed, it would be a subcommittee of the chamber. We think fiscally that makes the most sense, rather than establishing a standalone organization, which most counties have. We think that chamber, economic development, and tourism all have that same focus, and we think that it makes the most sense to be under.
It is the most desirable so far. Everyone I've talked to is a little jealous of our setup right now.
And when you look at 2020 and what it did to a lot of organizations that are solely supported by the innkeeper's tax, a lot of them had to lay off. We think that, given that our organization is very strong financially, that any downturns in, in tourism, being that it's supported mostly by those who visit the community, that we can fill in some of that gap and make sure that we're not reducing activities or individuals to produce and do those activities.
And then to be clear, innkeeper's tax puts zero tax burden on the citizens of Wells County is something that.
Correct.
Is only carried by the people who are staying there at the hotel or the, the people who have opted into this innkeeper's tax program, essentially.
Yeah, innkeeper's tax would, would be on hotels, cabins, any of those types of things that have 30 days or less of stay, and so.
We have those estimates of what that would be.
Yep. But, but yes, it's taxed to the individuals that stay in our county, not the individuals who live in our county unless you happen to go rent a room.
Sure. And then those funds, those funds then directly finance and fund that committee or commission, or whatever we want to call it, or council, then always to add to tourism efforts to bring more people in this county. Of course, you guys track those results and.
Absolutely.
Stay with the organization.
Yep. But, yeah, what we're asking is to kind of, a little bit of seed money to get this, to make sure this thing continues to move forward until the taxes.
You want some more time to study that?
Yeah, where do those funds come from?
Out of the local income tax fund, the lit.
Yeah.
We would have funds to make that work. Right.
Correct.
It's not a long term, but it's just like you said, seed money to make it happen. And hopefully, next year, if they have some grants, the 15 might be eight or nine or 10.
So being as slow, as towards end of the year that we are, I mean, are you going to be able to accomplish anything with the 15, with all the holidays and everything coming up?
Yeah, so that's why we actually wanted to do this now instead of waiting until. We've been pushing that tax piece first, as we feel like website design, branding work, this is the right time to do that. We don't feel that there's going to be a, I mean, there's going to be certainly some meetings that we can work around the holidays. But this is the time of year that's a little bit slower from, from an activities perspective. We don't have to worry about focusing on the calendar and getting everything updated and finding out where the events are. This is a slower time that we think we can start to focus, or at least for Audrey, to be able to focus on that as she also assists in the activities for Bluffton now. Again, some of those things are, the Summer Concert Series, the farmer's market is, is winding down, that she's got the time now to be able to foot forth the efforts to do that now. That gives us then, as, again, the fall, the winter, to get those pieces out and then starting out with the spring with a really strong advertising package as we get into the next year when people start traveling.
So the concert series, everything that'd go into that website so people have access to see what it is?
Right, the purpose is to be more cohesive so that everyone, there's a central location that you go to instead of going to the city website and then to individual places that's just the city of Bluffton. Instead of bouncing around, you have a central area to find everything that you need.
Yeah, and, and this would also provide some focus on getting that marketing out.
When you definitely, you experienced growth, I mean, you experienced growth in those programs you mentioned, correct? I mean, from what I saw, you did, so.
It's still difficult to find when, when what is.
Right.
So will this cover Ossien's activities, too?
Yeah, the whole county. The whole county. You'd find a central area to submit your events and different activities. If you take a look, I mean, visit Fort Wayne, visit Cosiaska County. If you take a look, if you type those in, you're going to find all the events happening that weekend. It's visually appealing to you, and it all starts with a visit. That's one of the quotes that we really focus on.
Would you say it's a fair assumption to say that the growth you've seen in those programs now has just been word of mouth and what you've passed out and some stuff you've done for free social media?
Yeah, I definitely think it's the increased marketing effort. You know, the farmer's market, when it moved downtown, it started with essentially zero because a lot of the, the folks that were originally at the farmer's market moved up north and didn't come into the plaza. But it went from zero to averaging 14 to 18, 20 vendors. And that's through, you know, a lot of phone calls, marketing efforts.
At this point, you're saying like, essentially, you're not going to see that next level of growth unless you have a bigger bullhorn?
Exactly. Yeah.
Absolutely.
But like you said, most people are always online searching the community and what the calendar of events is. They're going to visit or be near the.
That's something like Google, like something we've heard, is when you type in Bluffton, Indiana or Ossien, Indiana, what pops up, and it's usually not even in our area. And so the point is to channel that.
Increase our presence.
Yeah.
And while, while we have a website, it doesn't, you know, this, this proposal has SEO work in it to make sure that it's getting pushed out there in the places we are not familiar with from a marketing perspective. So that's the, that's the key piece, right? Making sure that you get yourself, when somebody searches certain keywords, to get yourself visible at the top of the list and any searches.
The economy is the main focus, that we can increase.
I would, I would be happy to, to make a motion to help fund this.
I'm excited that you're, you know, we're at least using local vendors where they qualify and they have the direct resources. We try to keep that money in, so I second that.
Okay. All paper, aye? Three, zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you.
I'll be back.
That's right. Okay. Several other items here. An ordinance to approve the sale of the county farm.
Resolution.
New resolution.
It says ordinance, I just read what I'm looking at. It's probably correct.
I'm looking at what says the jail project.
The bond, okay, I missed it, but I just went to the top of the next page, so. Issue bonds and use ARP funds for the jail project. Any questions, comments regarding that?
I, I don't have any. I'm, I'm very familiar with it.
I've read through it. I can't say that I know, you know, Roy, if you could give us some overview, so.
Couple-minute version of what we're signing.
Well, part of the process on the bonding for the jail project, the jail project was, is being funded in part by the use of ARP funds and then the balance on a bond issue. So what you have before you is, again, prepared by bond counsel, a resolution that the county issued bonds and use ARP funds to pay for the cost of the jail project. Was the jail project, what, is it 7.5?
7.5 and some change in that vicinity.
7.5, and you were using, what, 1.5 ARP money and 5.0 bond? Or was it ARP money, 1.75?
ARP is 2.7.
2.7.
2.7.
2.7.
Yeah.
And that's all being applied?
Yes.
Then the rest is bonded.
And the rest is bonded.
Right.
Okay.
Entertain a motion for the resolution, and what number would that be?
2021-20.
20, okay, thank you. So moved. Second. All paper, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Zero. Ordinance approving the sale of the county farm. What else can we want?
Okay, as, as you recall, the procedure with respect to the sale by the county of the county farm is that you had it appraised, and so that appraisal was done a number of months ago. And then the next step for the county commissioners is to set a minimum bid. This is not, if you, if you bid this much, we'll agree to sell it. You're just supposed, the statute says you're supposed to set a minimum bid based upon your review of the two appraisals as well as your general knowledge of the value of the property. And that ordinance is supposed to set out the terms of the sale. So in preparation for this, you've selected Halderman to assist you in auctioning the property. And I've had email with at least three people at Haldeman's on, on trying to get all the terms right. And we had another glitch in that. I think Rick said, well, the two, the two parcels are fine, and then we thought, well, maybe, maybe a building lot that's, that's north of the county home cemetery and south of the legal green might be a good building site. It might have negligible value to a farmer, but value to someone as a building site. So we've changed that. And so what I've got for you is an ordinance that sets out those minimum bids, and that was based on 80% of the appraised value. And Rick thought, well, that's, that's as good a place as any to start.
It's probably the number we would start at in an auction anyways, so.
Well, because Halderman's are doing what they're doing in terms of brochures and this and that, and I'm preparing what you're supposed to do according to the statute on selling property. You've got to advertise the sale. It's got a, that notice has to be published at least two times. And the advertisement has to set out the minimum bid, including the property ID number for the tract as well as legal description. So I've got an ordinance that sets out all those terms. So the, the thing is, if you approve the ordinance as, as we're presenting it to you today, then I need to schedule a publication of the advertisement and the news banner. And we go from there. That, that notice is supposed to say when bids could be received. So it may be a misnomer. Well, you're, you're having an auctioneer. Well, yeah, the auctioneer's going to conduct a sale, but the statute says that you're supposed to say, when can bids be received? So the notice is saying you can submit the bids to the county in care of the county auditor or alternatively to Rick John Loes at Haldeman's. But what happens then on the day of the sale, and we said that the bids have to be received. If, if you're going to make a bid to the auditor, you have to make it by noon on the day of the sale. So at the time of the sale, then we'll open the bids, because the statute requires they're, they're open to the public. And then we'll, we'll start from there. Whoever's got the highest on bids either received by the auditor's office or by Rick, that's the starting point, and away we go. Let's have an auction.
As easy as a guy thinks, I'll put it that way. Never is. So I'll entertain a motion to accept approving the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Second. All paper, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
Got a number?
2021-16.
16?
Yep. 16.
Okay. So now, the next item is to accept the sales configuration, the deed for the parcel set aside for the county home cemetery, and the rights of way enheasements for the highways adjacent to those properties.
Miscellaneous to the sale of the county farm, we know there, we know where the bodies are buried now, so there, there were. And I, and I think Scott Elsie sent me some notices, I mean, the news banner. I mean, this is, I don't know, 1820s or so, that, that deaths were reported, they were buried on site. By statute, the county has to own cemeteries in perpetuity. So it was thought best to identify the location of the cemetery or where the bodies are buried and for that to be surveyed and the county to accept that, exclude it from what's being sold, because we can't sell it. So one thing I have for you to do that, and we want to get this done before it's sold, so the property that the county owns and sells will exclude the 1.70 acre tract that's been surveyed. Now, that tract is, I think it butts up to the woods. And it's, and it's south of the ditch. Anyway, so, so one thing I have is for the commissioners to deed to the commissioners that 1.7 for cemetery purposes. I've applied for a sell-off from area plan, and so that, that deed should be recordable. After you sign it, I have to tell upstairs, have them stamp the approval for the minor subdivision, and then we'll record it. And then it'll officially be a separate tract and excludable from what the county's selling.
And then this cemetery board will maintain the mowing and things like that, so.
Well, they put some kind of signage out there of, I know when I was out there, you're not even sure who's out there. I know there's a list from the old home.
It would be up to the cemetery's board if they choose to do that?
County has a cemetery commission that's in charge of that.
Yeah, we've got five members.
We found out over the last four or five years, we own five or six cemeteries, so.
So I'll entertain a motion to.
So moved.
That parcel.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
Okay, now, in connection with obtaining approval for a minor subdivision, area plan commission requires that the property being split off have adequate access. So they have deemed adequate access to be a standard highway right-of-way. Now, the strip that you are conveying to yourselves for cemetery purposes just has a 25-foot right-of-way along the highway, that's all it is, because area plan says you don't have to own 200 feet all the way back, just at least 25 feet, so we've got that. And so you would have to, since you're the landowner, you would have to deed to yourself for highway purposes, a 30-foot right-of-way over that south or east 25 feet. Well, as long as the county owns it, why just give itself a highway right-of-way for that 25-foot strip? Let's give to the county a highway right-of-way 30 feet along any part of the county farm parcels that are contiguous to a highway. That way, you've got it, you don't have to wait on getting anything from a subsequent owner. So another document that I prepared is part of the, I don't know how many right-of-ways I said I had, 14? Is a right-of-way, again, from the commissioners to the commissioners, so on that you're signing twice. You're signing once as the landowner, giving yourself as commissioners a highway right-of-way, and then on the last page, you're accepting that right-of-way from yourselves. Over that makes sense?
Yep. So moved.
Second to second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
And then next, there's a resolution for you approving the lease for the county highway garage. That's what we had a hearing on. So the resolution approving the execution of the lease for the highway garage.
So just to make clear, we're just approving that we're going to be the lease word, the leasing, and it's the agreement there. We're not approving the cost or anything else associated with who's going to do it, how it's done, any of that, just?
You're approving the form of the lease that we've had since August, I guess. And you recall, there was a building corporation formed, and in its organizational meeting, it reviewed and approved the lease. So they've approved the draft of the lease, and what we're asking for in this resolution is for you to also approve that lease draft. As Brad Bingham explained, there are some terms that we don't know yet, because the final costs aren't in. I mean, as I explained, we are still in the process of interviewing and hiring a construction manager, let alone an architect and designing and bidding out.
But this has nothing to do with that.
No. I'll entertain a motion for that. Resolution number?
2021-21.
Any other questions?
No, I would just, and I know it's not part of this, but I'd like to understand the rest of that. The CMPs, the cost, how that's all set up, just so I'm up to speed with that whole project. I know there's some concerns that I've been called about just in the last couple of days about that, so.
Yeah, we've advertised four proposals.
I just want to be caught up on where we're at with this all.
Okay, well, when it comes to, when the proposals are in, then there'll be time to review those and decide upon a manager.
I think the deadline for those are the 18th of October, maybe, give or take. There's a certain time that we were already advertising.
So it'll be the next meeting?
Yeah. Did we have a motion on this one?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero. Okay. All right. And I think the last item we were going to remove from the list. We won't address that, so we'll go to monthly reports.
Yeah, I want to move that to the next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yeah.
It'll be monthly reports next.
Okay, we have a 2022 holiday schedule. There are two, one with Juneteenth added, which would be observed on June 20th, which is a Monday, and one with no Juneteenth. And also, I have your meeting dates, and I have two of those. One correlates with Juneteenth added, and the other one does not, because June 20th falls on a Monday. So if you put Juneteenth on the holiday schedule, we'll have the meeting that month on June 21st, a Tuesday instead of a Monday.
And to clarify, this was, Juneteenth was added as a federal holiday, correct?
Correct, correct.
So our options are essentially to exclude it or.
Add it.
Or not, create it or something else, or include it, yeah, essentially, so. That would give another day off to county employees.
It would. Unless you decided to take off Columbus Day or something.
I'm not interested in dropping Columbus Day. I would make a motion to adopt it.
So just another paid holiday for all county?
It would be.
Employees? And it's already federally approved?
Well, it was added just this year, it's the first time, so.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
And I will update that, I'll add that in the handbook as well. And then your 2022 meeting dates.
You need to correlate.
Yes.
Putting away with Juneteenth observed.
So the 21st of June would be your meeting date schedule for 2022.
Correct.
21st of June?
Yes.
What else?
I'll have a motion for that if you accept the meeting dates for 2022.
Accept the motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
That's all I have today.
Come on, we've got a lot more time.
I do have something else I'd like to discuss, so. Of course, public safety is very, very important, and it's been an issue for a while. Southern Wells has asked to partner with us on flashing school zone signs, and I think the cost is right around $3,500. That's something I would really like to support. I think the children have been hit, and this is the only school we have on old county roads, and I'd like to make a motion to pay for those signs.
What road's on? Just right from the school?
Yep.
301?
301, so 300.
Did I oppose it at all, or it's good?
I made a motion, I need a second.
Where do those funds come from?
It's the, I assume, general.
From your budget?
Yeah, we can't take it from the general, it would have to be some commissioner-funded budget. And if we're making flashing soft like we have on 300?
They have solar lights that they set up for the signs that help sell traffic.
Do you know how many ARP dollars the school's getting?
I do have seen that report.
Is that a dollar amount that could be funded through that?
I think it could, if those funds could be applied to that. Last time I was told, we can't use those ARP funds. Is that correct?
We can't use ours for that.
Yeah, we can't use it, but I didn't know if their limitation, whether they've investigated, whether or not that qualifies.
But it's both county roads, right? Both, this is the only school that has both county roads?
That's right, it's the only one that has old county roads. And, you know, they've asked for this, and this is something I've generally worked on since February. And it's important to them, I think it's a good partnership. You know, we definitely have room there to talk to them. I think what they're asking for is just under $3,500, and not to exceed that.
Do they have what kind of signs they want, or they already picked out?
They have them, they've purchased them, and they've got them there.
Oh, they just want half the money, and then what about installation?
Installation, they said they could handle, they would talk to us about. And I think it's fair that if we're taking that on, that they can pay for the installation.
We have all the equipment to install.
Right, absolutely, and I know we could associate a cost with that.
Could we use installation to offset some of the cost? We'll install them, they pay more, we pay less?
Yeah, we also have private funding where people would help too, but I think that we should definitely step up and take care of that.
I'll second it.
This would be right on the, right by the school?
Correct, right from the school.
Related to left turn movements on northbound traffic coming up 300 West. So they want a flashing during school group arrival drop-off and dismissal times.
Correct.
I understand that, so. And they've done all the studies on that and have all that information too, so.
Are there a lot of kids who cross that county that country road?
No.
This is about slowing traffic, this comes up in that approach.
It's about the stop.
So we have deputies out there, you know, in the mornings and the evenings, and, you know, we're just trying to get people slowed down a little bit and take notice. And those flashing lights definitely proven to work. And of course, I'd want to do this on the premise that it is the only school we have here that's on old county roads. I don't want to wait till there's a tragedy and say, oh, we could've, would've, should've.
I second it.
Good. 201.
Do we know what we want to pay for that out of?
I'd like to discuss that.
Okay.
What's next, anything else?
I have nothing else.
Okay. Jessica? Audience, wide open.
Yeah.
Hey, come up.
Right up to the table, huh?
We've got a chair or two for you.
All right.
Get that nice shirt and the pitcher.
I got a question for the three of you, and congratulations on your election, Jeff. Two questions on two subjects. So the first is on vaccine mandates, both public and private, and the second is on the Second Amendment. And it's essentially the same question regarding both issues. What are your personal views on each issue, the Second Amendment and vaccine mandates, passports? And the second question, what do you believe the role of the county commission is to act as an intermediary association, or an intermediary institution between the federal government and your constituents? If you need clarification on that, I can be happy, but.
Well, the state's in between us, so federal, state, and then us. So, you know, with COVID, how it started, came through whatever the federal government went, went to Holcomb, and Holcomb came through us, so that's the whole thing. The premise, I think anybody that's an American should not be compelled, forced, they should have at their discretion to do what they want to do, that's my opinion. Now, once it gets to that point, I can't say at my juncture, where we are as a group, where, if it's the federal government, the state government, or locally, do I feel that we should have something in place? Very good possibility that I think we should. But that was a discussion point that we're moving to the next meeting. That was on our agenda today, to have kind of a one-on-one, since Jeff's brand new to the game here, to see where we are.
If I'm out of order asking in the public forum, I'm sorry, I. I saw that.
I mean, there was an article that we received, was it Montgomery or Morgan County? In Montgomery, sounds right, in July, August timeframe?
You know, we've received things from Cosiowska County, and we've received things from.
Whether it's a resolution form, whether it's just a statement, I feel the county residents that live here have the common sense to know that they are susceptible, whether they have a health issue that warrants it, make a determination, but it's a doctor's choice and the individual's choice, that's my opinion.
I would concur with that, I feel that it is the individual's choice. I mean, we have Fourth Amendment for a reason, and I think if we, without getting into the merits of how dangerous COVID is or it isn't, I still feel that individuals need to make those choices if they're going to have an injection to do something medically to themselves. I've always felt that way, and I would stand by that and openly, publicly, as I am, that, you know, I would not be in support of forcing people to do such a thing. Your Second Amendment question, personally, the Second Amendment is there for a reason. That's my personal opinion, it's enshrined in our founding documents. I took an oath to uphold that and protect that, so I would always do that, for whatever means I had necessary to do that. And also protect the citizens and preserve their rights in any capacity that I could, you know, from my position. Sometimes that's limited. As far as where I feel our, and if I understand your question right, you're asking me what I feel my role is as an elected official, to explain that a little bit?
So if I can give some context.
Please.
Traditional American ideas on federalism, and all the way down to self-government, right? You have various layers of political interference between government associations or government institutions and constituencies. So historically, you may have a case like, you may have a tax. Federal government passes a tax, states can refuse to enforce that or collect that tax.
I follow you now, then.
All the way up to New England, threats of secession during the Jefferson administration. Obviously, that's not what I'm talking about.
Right.
In principle, this idea of states and local governments acting as intermediates between federal intrusion, or local governments acting as intermediates between the people and state intrusions.
I think, yeah, I think that we're land of laws, and we have to respect that. I think when it goes to the appropriate branches of government, we have to recognize it. I think that there's a mechanism also to fight back against that if we don't agree, and it's through our court systems. And I think that county, cities, and other jurisdictions can bring suit against those if we disagree. I mean, that's my feeling on that. I think there are also ways to maybe meet a minimum without being agreed, just sort of creating an undue burden on the taxpayer. So if that answers your question.
Yeah, it's getting to the heart of it, Jeff.
Yeah, I don't agree with the passport piece, that I don't think we should infringe upon anybody's freedom as it's written in the Constitution on any amendment. So I support how it is, and if it comes before this board, I'll vote upon the context, but that's how I feel about it now.
I just appreciate getting your personal and political views on the record as far as those two issues are concerned. It sounds like you guys are all very similar on both issues. And if push came to shove in this county, and the executive order in the case of the vaccine mandates is still sort of in flux, there's no deadline on it, I just read the latest update. OSHA doesn't know what they're doing at this point with it. Would the county view it as appropriate to pass an ordinance to prohibit OSHA employees from enforcing?
I think that's something that we're, like Commissioner Gerber was saying, that we need to look at. These, you know, Commissioner Stringer's new, we've got a couple ideas and resolutions that we're looking at, and I think we need to explore those and have a better understanding, and also look at what's out there in the state.
Okay, guys, I've taken up enough of your time, I appreciate it. Anything else?
Not at all. Thanks a lot. I've got your numbers, anytime, I'll call you and vice versa. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. Anybody else while we're here?
Just a real quick update on the county farm sale. After, Roy and I, after we got all through the ordinances and what needed to be done, we did get brochures ordered and signs ordered, and everything should be delivered in the next day or two. And I'll be putting signs up out there, here, hopefully by Tuesday or Wednesday, so. And there'll be around 1,200 brochures sent out to area landowners and investors, so. I have just an update on that, and we're rolling along good. Advertising will be hitting the papers this week, as well as our website does have the listing up, so if you want to go to the website, you can see that. Along with the virtual tour, we did a drone video of it, so I think everything looks good. So we're moving forwards.
Excellent. Josh?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Josh Barkley, and I've come today just to discuss the county highway to garage. Want to start by saying definitely for the county highway to garage as a taxpayer, but have some just general questions. I know currently there's a proposal, RFP, out that's on the county website, you know, for the construction manager as constructor method of bidding the project. And quite frankly, and I've read through it, you know, both as a taxpayer and a local contractor, currently, there are no, just going by the criteria, but let her see, construction manager as constructor experienced with projects of similar scope and size. Currently, there are no contractors in Wells County that have ever bid, or actually, I shouldn't say bid, but done a CMC project such as this one, on a public works project, not going to say private, because I don't know that for a fact. But, you know, the IC code's very, you know, specific as far as code 5-32, you know, in regards, and a lot of this came after right-of-work, the right-to-work proposals, so. And I know just through previous conversations, talking about, and I'm just looking at selection schedule, also looking at the schedules of construction schedules. I guess I would just ask, and really, you're, I was trying to see here again, the last part of it, you know, talking about that ultimately, I guess I'm just, is this the direction the county's going to go on all projects? I mean, like, bridge projects, are we going to start hiring construction managers to look over our bridges? You know, those are obviously, I don't know the exact costs that we spend a year on bridges or any project in general. I just don't, you know, wanting to know, you know, wanting basically to know that. I mean, lots of public works projects have been done here in the county. And, you know, quite frankly, I just wondering why the, and I know that, you know, the county doesn't do projects every year. When I say public works projects, I'm talking, you know, different projects that the city of Luftham's done, you know, the downtown square, which, you know, that obviously was a, you know, kind of a public-private partnership between the county, but that was, again, a design bid build project. So I guess I would just, you know, number one item here on your RFP talks about at any time the county can reserve the right to terminate the RFP process for any reason, and I would ask that we would do that, you know, next steps, being hire, have an RFP proposal to hire an architect, design the project per what the county's wanting, and then bid it just as we would normally, you know, what we'd normally do on, such as when we're doing a bridge project or anything like that. So that's just my only comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. More comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment, so we can begin the executive session.
I've got one more comment. Is there any comments to what I just asked?
I don't have, I mean, we had a conversation last week.
Correct.
Over the phone, so I think you understand where I'm at, so.
I'm not up to speed on the whole thing, I've asked to look at it, so I don't have any comments either way yet.
I guess I'm just not understanding how, you know, the criteria of CMC, if there are no contractors in Wells County that can be a CMC, then, I guess I'm just not understanding the direction.
I don't have anything else to say.
I think as far as a construction manager on every project, Josh, you know, I don't know. I don't know where that would be appropriate or where it isn't. But I know a lot of the merits of everything was measured out, and I know in the process of catching up, Commissioner Stringer.
Sure.
You know, I imagine all that will be discussed again, rehashed, and, you know, maybe a better answer could be given to you at that point. Is that fair?
I guess.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Very good. Your adjournment. Thank you.